We are live, Judge. The visual seems to be a little messed up with the audio.
Audio zone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. Happy Valentine's to everyone. It's now 10 o'clock, and we're here for the regular session of Hunt County Commissioners' Court. We will be handling the regular scheduled posted agenda as well as an addendum to this meeting. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance to our flags. Please stand.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this community, and we thank you for allowing us to come take care of community business. We ask you to give us wisdom and patience and understanding with each other in order to make righteous decisions. In Christ's name, we ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioners Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from January 24th, 2023. Entertain a motion for approval.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. You're going to be abstaining. You weren't at that. Were you at that meeting?
I'd like to abstain.
Yeah, okay. Because you weren't at the meeting. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, with Commissioner Monroe abstaining since he was not present. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the January 30th, 23 special session. Entertain a motion for approval.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Does anybody here wish to speak to the court today? Daniel, we got anybody on?
Yes.
I'd like to make one announcement at this time. For those that may not have heard, W.D. Hilton, D. Hilton, received a state award from the Texas Highway Department Monday, a week ago, I think it was, called the Roadhand Award. He was nominated by the TexDOT District Engineer, along with myself, for his service to Hunt County. Is Chairman of our Transportation Steering Committee. And he's been doing that since 2010. And he is, him and his steering committee have done a tremendous amount of work. They got voter approval for two, for one bond, an amount of $24 million, for which we've issued $12 million of those, $12 million worth of those bonds. And through those bonds and the work of that committee, we have secured over $300 million of TexDOT funding for highways in Hunt County. And we owe a lot to Dee for his hard work.
Very deserving, and you're right. They do a wonderful job.
They do a lot. He does a lot. And he does other things for it. He's a great guy, greets us, and a great human being. We all appreciate Dee and his effort for our community.
Judge, I've worked with him since 2001, and he's been involved, and basically, he has been the person that has led this, along with him and Torkley. And I tell you what, we, the citizens, we should acknowledge him because he has done a great job.
Yeah, he's done a wonderful job, him and the old committee. So, all right, moving on to old business action items, the MOU agreement between Hunt County, Texas A&amp;M, AgriLife Extension. Daniel, you got any comments? I think you handed this out something new.
Yeah, I handed you out a red line of some real minor changes that I made. I added in the word Hunt before county all the way through. That's where most of that red comes from. The only other place is in paragraph numbered one, halfway down the first page, that shows that this, the period that this starts on is January 1st of this year. This is retroactive a month and a half. Then it goes through a five-year period and ends on December 31st, 2027. But it will, under the terms of this paragraph, it will automatically renew for additional one-year terms if the county doesn't undo it. And then in addition to that, the Commissioners' Court can back out of the agreement at any time, as long as they give 90 days' notice. That's on the very last page on paragraph 13. So effectively, this is a five-year contract to begin with, but it's really only required that the county stand for at least 90 days from action. And the way that this is written, it will continue after 2027 from that point forward until the Commissioners' Court takes action to back out of the agreement.
So the wording on the end of paragraph one, where we'll consider renewal every year, is that after the five-year period, or is that every year beginning next year?
The way that it's written, it's every year beginning next year.
Okay.
Yeah, I just don't want us to get in where we forget about an agreement worked up, and it's way outdated.
Understood. And this should be added as a, something that should be considered around September of each year, just for, you know, to the extent that it has any impact on the budget, and potentially even August, so that we can handle. I mean, this isn't a big, it's already accounted on part of the budget, and it's not going to make any big difference. But as far as a permanent calendar, it should be August or September.
Put that on my calendar for August 1st, so we can deal, I'll deal with it in August. Just remind me. Thank you, Daniel. Any other comments?
I would like to thank the Extension Office for being a partner with us all these years, and we had talked about this last time. And I thank, I thank our attorney for figuring all this out and taking the time to do so.
Anything else? Entertain a motion for approval?
No move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Consent calendar. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action items accounts payable.
I make a motion, repay the bills.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of line item transfers.
Make a motion to approve line item transfers.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of budget amendments.
Make a motion to approve budget amendments.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel.
Make a motion, approve payroll and personnel.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'm going to take up the action item under our addendum. Number one, interlocal agreement of pharmacy services between Hunt County and Hunt Memorial Hospital. Daniel, this is a contract where we're changing our pharmacy from an entity out of Hopkins County to Hunt Regional. We'll be supplying our pharmacy for the jail. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And basically, this is the one that we talked about, I think, two different, two meetings ago. Effectively, we're avoiding bidding by doing a piggyback process through that other contract. 100% of the money that Hunt County pays will cover 100% of the cost, but the hospital basically is just going to be a pass-through.
Right.
There's not going to be any additional cost to, to the county that's added on.
Right.
So it's the same as the terms that we discussed, I think, two meetings ago.
Right. Your Honor, I sustain from the, this.
Yes, sir. Okay. Yeah, this is, Commissioners, this is really a good benefit for the whole community because the hospital gets a benefit from it, as well as we get a price break benefit from it. So it helps both, both of our taxing entities by making this change. So I entertain a motion for approval.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, got one abstained, and Commissioner Martin. Got it? All right. Now to a posted agenda. Number one, proclamation of National Donor Life Month, February 2023. Steve Harrison.
Thank you, Judge. If y'all will indulge me in just a second, give a little brief history of why we're doing this. Obviously, today is the day for National Donor Day and the month of February. First off, Jessica, Brittany, thank y'all for helping put this together for me. Wayne, Glenda, will y'all stand just for a second? I'm not going to make you stand all the time while I read this. Good deal. Thank you. I'll call you up in just a second. Real quick, last January, December, I saw a sign around town asking for a kidney for an individual. I'd only met Wayne a couple of times. Glenda, I don't even know if I'd met you by then. But what caught my attention was a positive blood type. And I started talking to their son about the situation, didn't know that Wayne was in the need for a kidney. And we kept it secret the whole time, and I started to process almost the day that I saw the sign. I was all in, wanted to donate, and wanted to help out. Went through four months, five months of all kinds of medical stuff, testing, all that, to finally get approved. This whole time, they did not know what was going on. A month before the surgery date, finally found out that I was a match and could donate. And so I made a call to Shane to ask him to drive by my house one day, that I would just happen to be outside and they could pull in. So they did. And very brief conversation, but I told Wayne that me and him had a date on June the 7th. Of course, he was shocked. He didn't know what I was talking about. And I told him again, I said, "We have a date on June the 7th, and it's at Baylor in Dallas." And I said, "I'm going to donate a kidney to you." I said, "But my only request is, is that you two live your life the best you can for whatever you have left." Since then, these two have become world travelers. They've gone on a cruise, they've been out in West Texas camping for a week, they were in Florida a couple of weeks ago, so they're doing what I asked, and that's, that's the best part about this. Obviously, I know they gained a lot out of this. Wayne, Wayne gave, gained a second life, but I gained a lot for it as well, which is something that I knew nothing about prior to reading the sign, it was about organ donor. You know, most people think that once you pass away, you can donate stuff, but there's also a thing called a living donor. You can donate your kidney, you can donate part of your liver, there's bone marrow, obviously, blood, there's all kinds of things that you could do to change somebody's life. And so when I found out that this was Organ Donor Month and Day, that I wanted to do a proclamation, and I know Sandy with HR, y'all ran a newsletter this month on it as well. Thank you, guys, for doing that, helping to get the word out. But again, you don't think about this until it touches you, your family, or friends, or something like that. So, you know, hopefully, by doing this, maybe somebody will get out and talk about it. It'll touch somebody else to either, like I said, donate blood, become a bone marrow, thank you, a bone marrow, I got one, bone marrow as well, which I'm a part of as well, kidney, anything like that. But this time, I want to go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas there are many thousands of men, women, and children waiting on a list for a life-saving organ tissue donation that will provide them with a second chance, and whereas more than 100,000 people are on the wait list for an organ transplant in the United States, of which 85% of patients are waiting for a kidney. Many transplant candidates wait years for an organ from a deceased donor. On average, 20 people die each day waiting on a transplant. And whereas one donor can save up to eight lives through organ donation and improve another 75 lives through eye, blood, and tissue donation. And whereas it is unfortunate that in our society, many people are unaware of the real need for organ donations, as the list of those requiring transplant grows every year. And whereas it is recognized that being a organ donor is a personal decision which should be discussed in advance with one's family. And whereas only through education and increased public awareness can people make the decision to donate their organ tissue and make a tremendous contribution of the gift of life. And whereas thousands of Americans receive the gift of life each year through organ transplantation, however, the number of people in need of life-saving organs remains staggeringly high at an increase by one person every nine minutes. And whereas the gift of life is not just an option for, for a donor who passes away, but an option for a living person as well, known as a living donor. In 2002, 6,466 people became living organ donors. Most living donors donate one of their kidneys or part of their liver. Whereas living organ donors make thousands of transplants possible every year, there is a lot to learn before you can decide whether donating an organ is right for you. And whereas February is National Organ Donation Month, however, February the 14th is National Donor Day, today. A time for all Americans to celebrate the generosity of those who have saved lives by becoming an organ, eye, tissue, bone marrow, and blood donor. And to encourage more Americans to follow this example, and now, therefore, I, Stephen M. Harrison, County Commissioner of Hunt County, do hereby proclaim February is National Donate Life Month in Hunt County, and urge all employees and residents to visit orgendonor.gov to find out more about becoming a donor, and to become better educated about becoming an organ donor, and create a better community for all individuals with them. Wayne, Glenda, you guys like to come up and accept this proclamation?
So Wayne here has navel, has called her, she has my kidney. They've obviously, before, before this time, he was, he was stuck in a house, couldn't get out and do anything, obviously, machines, medication, and all that. And as you see today, he's out living his best life. So that's why I wanted to do this, but this time, since you guys, this proclamation, look right there, it's got a good, nice, good picture. How good? Thank you.
What a great deal.
Your Honor.
I, go ahead.
I want to say this. I tell you what, the gift of life is very precious. And I tell you what, I want to thank Steve for what he's done and reference this gentleman and the family. And if you will, I know you read it, but would you make the motion to accept this proclamation, please?
I will. Is there anybody else that'd like to say anything, wants to say anything?
I'd like to say, you know, I just, I'm happy for the family that was recipient, and I'm honored to serve with somebody like Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. Well, I'll make the motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
All right. Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right. Action item two, quarterly report for the Boys and Girls Club of Northeast Texas. Good luck following that one.
It helps that I'm such a crybaby, and I'm like trying to hold back the tears.
I feel your pain.
Well, good morning. Thank you for having us here this morning. We greatly appreciate your support, and greatly, as well, your support honored as well, too. But my name is Brenda Chavez, and I am the Director for our Lone Oak Club. And once again, just thank you so much for allowing us to just share some organizational accomplishments, as well as some outcome-driven programs. At our Boys and Girls Club, we drive and strive in helping to, sorry, we aim to see our families succeed. And of our post-COVID, we kind of saw that a lot of our families were really needing a lot of resources, as well as some just necessities, and that included like food, academia, help, resources, and as well, just peer-to-peer relationships. And one of those things, peer-to-peer relationships, we have a program called Power Hour. And our Power Hour is just truly to help students with homework, and just to build on academic skills. And with that peer-to-peer program that we have, it has allowed our students to just blossom, and just be, just to truly get to know each other, and just build on that. And so it's been truly amazing to just kind of see that. As well, as an organization, it is essential for us to understand just the trauma care. Due to the COVID, we saw of our students just struggling mentally, but as well, just becoming emotionally aware of their surroundings, of their emotions. And we as well strive on this program called Smart Moves Emotional Awareness. And this semester, our staff have been able to just implement that within the semester. It's a, it's a program that we run every year. But Ms. Ally, who is our, one of our YDPs, who is our Youth Development Professionals, she has done an amazing job just putting that and plugging in with the kids. And just to share just a brief story, we know that our younger kids sometimes are unaware to really express what overwhelming is, or to even know that we're able to feel to the three emotions at the same time, right? When feeling, you can be mad and sad, as well as overwhelming when losing someone or just in a hard situation. And our students have been now able to, our younger ones who are in kindergarten, able to just share, "Hey, Ms. Ally, I am actually feeling very overwhelmed right now. Can I have a time for myself?" And I think it has been amazing to see our children just truly become aware of that, and to even take that out to their house, and their home, and their families. And so, but thank you so much. I truly, once again, it is an honor to be here just to share some of those stories. And as, as an organization, we just strive to be better than ever. And Ms. Wanisha's going to share an impactful story as well with her club.
Good morning. I want to say to Stephen, first of all, you're a true hero. You know, you hear of firefighters, police officers, nurses, doctors.
He's that, too. He's a police officer and firefighter, too.
The heroes are the family that fight for that individual.
That's right.
That's, that's who the heroes are.
My name is Wanisha. I'm the Club Director for Boys and Girls Club here in Greenville, and I just wanted to share an impact story with you guys that took place over the holidays. One of my staff members had the children write a letter to Santa, letting them know if they're naughty or nice. Some said naughty and wanted a PlayStation. But we had this one little girl who wrote a letter for her own bed. She's 10 years old. When I read that letter, I was like, "Her own bed?" So I talked to the little girl about it, and she started crying and telling me that her mother passed away, and she moved in with her father, and she doesn't have her own bed, and that that's what she wanted. Well, that moved me to tears. I went home and talked to my husband, whom seen a lot through his life. He's a 23-years sergeant for Dallas PD, but he was even moved by it. And he's like, I said, "We have to get her a bed." And he's like, "Yeah, we got to get her a bed." But we didn't have to. We, the next day, someone in our support team come through, and I stopped her and shared this story with her, and she reached out to the community. And the first place she reached out to here in Greenville, company donated a twin-sized mattress, lock springs, the rails, bed cover, a mattress cover, and pillow. And from there, our support team was like, "All right, we got with the board members, we want to do even more." So I sent with the little girl to make a wish, wish list on Amazon. Everything she wished for, I think, sometimes we take for granted. She wanted clothes, she wanted shoes, she wanted hair accessories, bow ties, and stuff like that. So the board members and everyone pulled together, and gifts just started coming into the location, and I wrapped them, and she got her gifts from Santa. So with all that being said, it was because she was a member of our club that we were able to recognize that. And through the support of our community and our support team, and to you guys, for your time and support, we were able to meet her needs, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank y'all for what y'all do, very much. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval of this report.
No move.
Oh, you, you want to get something else?
Thank you. She's going to participate in questions.
Would you like to say something? I'm sorry.
Just thank you again so much for the support that you've given.
Oh, fine, thank you. All right. Entertain a motion for approval.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number three, the Treasury's monthly report for November 2022. Brittany Turner.
Good morning, guys. I've got two reports. I've got this item and the next item. January caught up with me with end of month, quarter, and year with a bunch of reporting, so we're catching up on Treasury's reports. So we have a, for November 30, 2022, we have a month in balance of $62,637,724.12 in cash and invested funds. I wanted to make a note of some of the things that happened in November that changed on the report. There, as far as our investments go, we, in October, we had a certificated deposit mature, and that was paying at 0.45%. They offered a renewal rate that was lower than what our pool rates were. So our investment committee, which consists of myself, Bruce, and Judge Stovall, met, and we decided we were going to get rid of the CDs and put them in our invested, in our pooled funds, either Texpool Logic or our new Texas Class. We got contacted back by Inwood National Bank, which is in commerce that we do, have those CDs with. They were able to offer us then a higher rate, and not only on that CD, but also on the CD that matures in May. So we are now from 0.45% to 3.5% on both of our CDs at Inwood National Bank, and we're able to keep the money there at that bank, which is great. They really wanted to keep our business, and we're able to make that work. Like I said, Bruce and Bobby and I discussed it, and approved that, the money to stay at Inwood. And it's been good. They're at 3.5% on both of them, which the other one wasn't set to mature until May. So we got a really good deal on that.
Good, good job.
Also, on, in November, we paid off on our, our debt. We paid off the motor grader for Precinct 2 and the loaders in Precinct 4. Those were ones that we paid our final payment on, so those are, like I said, completed as of the end of November 2022. So those were my two things for November that I had. Does anybody have any questions about the November report specifically?
Appreciate you staying on top of it, Judge. Thank you.
Sir.
It's all Brittany.
Okay.
All right. Entertain a motion for approval in November.
No move.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item four, the Treasury's monthly report for December 2022.
Okay. And at the end of December 2022, we had a month in balance of actually about $10 million more. You can see we got that push, first push of tax money in the month of December. We had a month in balance of cash and invested funds, $72,248,737.02. Like I said, cash and invested funds noteworthy in December, like I said, we got that big push of tax money, and the, we, in order to diversify our invested portfolio, we took on the newest investment pool, Texas Class, over the summer to invest our ARPA funds in. That first big push of tax, or of tax money that we got for the general fund and our road and bridge accounts, I put in that new Texas Class pool so that we can have money there. there as well as in our logic and text pool. And so that way, like I said, it diversifies our money. We had, there was a concern that we had kind of all of our eggs in one basket, so we're trying to move things around. And at that point, Texas Class was paying more, so we're pushing that in there, trying to make as much interest as we can. Interest rates are still continuing to rise and even today, the same, only seeing a trend that is going up, so we're making good money in our pools right now, which is great. So like I said, I did put that big push of, the first big push of that in general fund and our, all of our road and bridge funds, also started investing in Texas Class, our County Clerk's Records Management and Preservation Fund. I was able to speak with Becky and our, again, our investment committee about this. And Becky was trending up over $1 million in her Records Management Preservation Fund. That's a fund that is able to be invested and we can collect interest on, which is just going to help her and her projects in the future. So we took that money from Becky's Records Management and Preservation out of the bank and put it into Texas Class so that it can now earn interest as well in the month of December. So those are just a few of the changes. We're still receiving in our tax money, or we did up until the end of January. Got a lot of that and pushing money into investments. So right now, we're, we're in good shape.
Would you restate the interest that that, that is pulling? What interest?
What the rate is?
Yes.
On which one?
On that last one on the.
They're all a little different. It's on your third, fourth page.
Yes, and it's on our invested funds.
It varies from about 3.9 up to 4.3. About the, about the most I see on there, Phillip.
That's, that's been a long term since.
Oh, yeah. It'd be 0.01 we got for a while.
It was, it was bad. So we are, we're getting a good return on all of our funds right now, which is great. And like I said, you can see the average daily rate on there for logic is 4.3336, Texas Class 4.317. There's a difference between those two, though it looks like it's the average daily rates less that one pays daily. So that's just an average in Texas Class, but that interest does pay daily on fluctuations. So we do end up netting a little bit more at the end of the month.
For the, for Commissioner Monroe being his first meeting and first Treasury report and for the public, all these funds are certified funds, they're guaranteed funds, they're CDs at banks, or they're Treasury notes, or they're something that's gold-plated. None of this money's at risk.
Correct.
So, so the public's not worried about us out.
Yes, everything that is me.
Investing in the stock market or anything. All this is in secured.
Yes, and everything that we have invested is in accordance to our investment policy that was approved by the Court back last May. We're not doing anything that is outside of that spectrum that they have, the Court has approved for us to invest our money in. And also in the Public Funds Investment Act, which is what we go by in our investment policy.
Alright, anything else? Entertain a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Second.
And motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brittany. Act Number Five, the Corollary Report for the City of Commerce Animal Shelter.
I make a motion to approve the Corollary Report from Commerce Animal Shelter.
Second.
And motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Act Number Six, a memorandum of understanding between Lone Oak Independent School District and Hunt County Sheriff's Office. Buddy, you want to brief us or? I think all we're doing is the sheriff's giving them permission to have their own law enforcement agencies. That's basically the crux of it.
It's my, it's, it's my understanding this document is required by the proposal of the school district becoming a police department. They have to give this interlocal agreement to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, who then in turn will review it. And if they feel they can, they'll sanction Lone Oak ISD for a police department. But this is just an agreement that we have pending their police department approval.
Okay.
May I ask some questions right fast? And I believe Daniel might be able to do this. I noticed at the end of it, it says when it goes into effect. I believe I talked to you about it yesterday. I fully agree with this. I think it's a great thing that the communities come together as far as Lone Oak ISD, that they're organizing this police, Lone Oak ISD PD. And they've already hired a police officer. Where he's certified, I do not know, but I did have a question in reference to the last part of it. Lone Oak ISD has already signed this MO, okay? My question is, is when will we put this into effect? Once T-Close and all them say that it does exist or? That's the issue I have.
Yeah. Are you saying that your understanding is T-Close has to have their documents before they approve the establishment of that police department?
That's my understanding, working with Greenville ISD, Cattle Mills ISD and.
Commerce?
Well, Commerce has had it before I came on board, so.
So, I mean, Phillip, you're asking about making it effective upon approval from T-Close.
Yes, sir.
But we didn't do that for the other three. And so if, I mean, to the extent, I mean, you could make an oral resolution. No, I'm sorry, I got to talk to the other people.
But they, with the other agencies, the police agencies, this is not a police agency. That's what the deal is.
I know, but it's about, I mean, it's a school district that. My understanding is the purpose of this is so that they can become that because T-Close is required to get this for approval of the agency's establishment. And so you can, and we didn't do that, we didn't say on the other three that it was only effective upon T-Close certification of the establishment of an office or a department. But if you want to do that here, you can do that in an oral motion and say, you know, I vote to approve this, but that the terms not be effective until approval by T-Close of the department.
Okay.
I don't know, because I haven't talked to anybody at T-Close, if that's going to have any impact on their approval of the department in general. I don't think that it.
It actually, to my knowledge, it actually doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. It actually doesn't.
Yeah, that can, you can make that motion that the terms not be effective until after approval by T-Close.
But they can't be a police force until they get that, so.
That's right.
So it's really kind of made a tomato. I mean, whether we do it or don't do it, it doesn't matter. It's going to be the same outcome.
I think it will be the same outcome, but since we, that's what we did with the last three, it's almost inconceivable that T-Close is going to say no to their establishment.
Right.
But I say, it's not going to be effective if T-Close does say no. So it's not, I understand what you're asking.
Well, we'll still be under mutual aid as far as colors of law and actuality.
We're covering it now since they don't have a jurisdiction.
Yes.
So that won't change if they don't get their, their certification from the state, then they don't have a police force and we continue.
Once they, once they're recognized as a ISD PD, then they can be added to our mutual aid with all the other law enforcement agencies within Hunt.
Yes, sir. That's, and that's what this agreement is right there. That's what it is.
Alright, entertain a motion for approval.
Still moved with the stipulation that everything in here is okay through T-Close and they issue a PD.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Act Number Seven, the construction management of renovation of the exchange building. Commissioners, as you know, we've talked about it for a while, we're renewing leases with the state for the health and human resources, four floors at the courthouse and then renew the lease, which is matures in May, I believe it is, or it ends in May. They've requested for the extension of a new lease that we make some improvements to the floors such as new floor covering, new paint, some minor renovations of bathrooms and break areas. And part of that requirement is that they're going to have to stay operational while this is going on. So literally the contract call, I guess the bid's opening today? Is it? Yeah, the bids are opening today. We bid this project and the contractor's going to be responsible for moving half of the furniture to, they're going to vacate a floor and then we're going to move all their furniture to one side of that floor and do all their renovations, then move all the furniture to the other side and then finish that and then put everything back the way it was. And they will have their IT people come in and do all the IT disconnection, reconnections. But there's going to be a lot of moving parts to this and Facilities doesn't have the time to be over there and managing their project or this scope and keep up with everything else they're doing. So we've asked LB Vestal, used to be LB Shelton, who's been in the construction business for quite a while along here, been a member of this community for most of her life, if not all her life. And she has multiple years of experience doing this, served overseas with some construction companies in the Mid East doing projects much bigger than this. She lives down at Club Lake. I guess she's been kind of semi-retired, but we approached her for, because we knew somebody, we need a construction manager on a part-time basis. We didn't need to bring anybody in full-time. And so she's consented to do this. And so you have in front of us, in front of you, the proposal for, she'll do it at a fee of $50 an hour, just on a as-need basis. She's already been here and met with some of the bidders and been through the process of what all's going to be required to be done with Chris. And so she's up to speed. So I'd make a motion that we approve this agreement with LB Vestal.
I second, third motion.
Any other discussion or questions?
I want to tell you, I've heard nothing but good from people in reference to this lady. And also, she had something to do with the decoration as far as the Cowboy Stadium.
I don't, I don't, yeah. She did, she worked on it. Yeah, she's done a lot of work, a lot of big projects, so she's very qualified to do this. We're lucky to have her. So, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, the proposal for rest, for restoration of windows in Hunt County Courthouse. Commissioners, I've been talking about this, I guess since I've been here. Four years ago, we started this process. Of course, being a historical courthouse, we can't just repair windows. We have to keep those windows in place and restore them back to their original conditions and colors. And so it requires that, in some cases, they'll have to remove them and seal the window, take them off, get it, get all the rust and all and any, any flaws in them, they have to repair and then pay them and put them back in. Some of them, they'll be able to, the ones that aren't too bad, they can do most of the work, you know, with the windows still in place. I can't testify for all the windows in the courthouse, but I know the windows in my office, I can't get close to them if the north wind's blowing because it's just like I'm outside with the wind blowing through the windows. For, for a lot of reasons, we need this project to happen. And Chris, if you come up and let me ask you a couple of questions, just so, so we all know. Because this has been going to be, first of all, there, there's only three companies we know of that do this. And one has refused to come talk to us, they're not interested in our project. One, we did a test that was in the Commissioner's office and they never could get the window fixed right. And so this is the only other window company that's available to us to do this project. Now, I know we talked about it with one of the contractors and I don't want to confuse this one as being the wrong one, but where they're going to actually do the work at night and they're going to be closing off part of our offices as they work, so they'll be putting plastic or something up to protect the area for those windows when they're working on them. But there, most of this work, if not all of it, will be done after hours. Is that still correct with this?
They're going to remove the windows several other times, plywood over them and take the windows back to the shop, the operable part of the windows. And that's a big part of what they have to repair. But the frames that are made into the masonry of the building, they're going to do in place.
So then they're going to be using chemicals to strip them and all, it's going to have a lot of odor so that we're not going to be able to be in that room. We don't need people in there while that work's being done. So it's going to be, it's an awful expensive process. I can't even imagine we're going to pay this much money to get it done. But I understand the process and it's an absolute necessity we get it done. If you walk around and look at some of the window frames, they're, they're rusted awfully. And Chris has done a great job. We've been, he's been working on this, like I say, for four years and the price, we negotiated it down, I think as far as we can get it down by softening up some of the requirements. Originally, and I guess the Historical Commission wanted us to make them all operable again. And to do that, it was about another million dollars, I think, wasn't it? So we talked them out of a lot of money by only making operable windows where we have to have access to the roof. And the other windows that aren't operable, they'll stay unoperable, but the ones that are operable will stay operable. But any that aren't operable that we have to have to get on that roof to get to our air conditioning units or make roof repairs, have to be workable. So we softened bid up quite a bit by, by changing that. And we started out, my idea was to do the first floor and see how it went. And when we bid it that way, I guess first floor price was about the same, but then they had to come back again. The floors two through four was about a half million dollars more money. So we asked them to give us a price to do it all at once. And so they lowered their price down about a half million dollars. But to do all the first through four floors, it's about 2.6, this shot, 2.6 million dollars to do this project, which is a lot of money. So Commissioners, you know, entertain comments, questions? You want to think about it? I think everybody's pretty much aware of the window situation, but I don't know if, if we do this. I guess Bruce, I forgot to call you and ask you, do we still have enough money in capital improvements to fund this or are we going to have to move money into capital improvements to fund it?
Well, it depends. Like right now, there's only, there's not just enough for this and you've got that money you're talking about for some other purchases.
But the next meeting, we'll need to refund, we'll need to capitalize that account again at the next meeting.
If you wanted to come out of, of a capital improvement, I don't know if this is something that, for whatever it's worth, that ARPA money.
I'm going to ask.
This is considered some form of infrastructure.
Yeah, we could do it with the, no, it's just, yeah, normal repairs and costs. We could do it through our ARPA funds if.
Oh, I would throw that out also since you got a lot of money there and beginning to start running out of time there.
Right. You know what the end date of this project, what they're projecting, how long?
No, they're going to do the first floor. If we still love them, when they get through that, we're going to start the other floors. And I'm expecting it's going to take eight or 10 months.
So we're still going to, they're still going to let us do the first floor, make sure before they go on up? Okay.
Your Honor.
But they're not going to move off? We got to tell them a certain time ahead of time so that they don't have to move off in reach stage.
I know many years will go when we had it done before, we basically did it ourselves with prisoners. Or we, at one time, we were putting in for the Historical Society in Ruffus to plan for part of this. Do they have any monies available for this at all now?
We applied, we applied for it. The, the way, way we understand it works, they will not give any county more than a $20 million grant, of which we've already used 3 million, I think, or something like that. Chris, you remember the number? It was like a million for the architect's plans for the restoration plans for the courthouse. And then it was a million or $2 million for the steps on the south side of, the repairs on the south side of the courthouse. So we only have about $17 million left that we're even eligible for. And from what the architect has shared with us, I mean, we apply every year, we're, because we've taken the grants, we have to reply every year for a grant with them. But most of those grants, like I said, they're, they're not really that strong considering the kind of money we got to have to fix it. So Chris and I's plan is being, is we're trying to fix things as we go, as we can. And we, we reported to the Historical Commission and we get credit for that as money put into it, so we don't have to do matching funds later when we do a grant with them. All their grants are matching fund basis, so, but we can get a bank of credit there as we do these projects. So if we get a future grant with them, we'll have that credit. So we, we have done that, but we don't, and they came out. So we have done that, but we don't, and they came out, they've approved, Historical Commission has approved the model window that we've done, the architects approved it, everybody says it's what we need to do to meet historical conditions, so.
They're very familiar with the contractor we're gonna use, and they like them, so.
Yeah. So we're, again, we're banking credit with them, so if in what, if we ever get to that time, we have a major project in the county and we're able to get the additional funding from the Historical Commission, then we'll have matching money already paid for.
Your Honor, I think that we need to act on this, because all it's gonna do is get worse, there's no doubt about that, and even more expensive, we need to.
Well, Phil, I agree with you. One caveat I haven't mentioned, it recently popped in my head, our courthouse will be 100 years old in 2029, and that's not very far off. And we need to work towards getting it a little better shape for the public for, you know, the 100 year, and make sure that we keep it going in the future. Be nice to have a nice celebration and have the courthouse in tip-top shape. We, I know we won't have it all done, but at least hopefully we can get the outside in good shape. And like I said, my window leaks water and air, it's gonna continue to deteriorate the building, it's just gonna cost us more to fix it if we don't get it fixed now, so. I don't know that we have a lot of choice.
And Judge, what is the significance of our membership in the Historical Association?
Say that again, then.
What is the significance of our membership in the Historical Association, is that status? I think.
It's partly status, it's partly the grant money.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, it's like everything else that, you know, the government seems to do, and, you know, the state funds that Historical Commission. But, you know, when they started it, you know, I guess 10, 15, 20 years ago, when we first got into it, $20 million was a whole lot to repair a courthouse. I think Fanning just got through with his, went in a hundred million dollars or something. I mean, 20 million doesn't go very far in restoring a courthouse anymore.
So the public understands the significance is our association in that regard makes us eligible for.
Makes us eligible for grants.
As shocking a number as this is to me, the, there isn't a greater amount available to us in the, through grants.
In the future.
In the future.
As we get a bigger project, our projects have been so small, they're not gonna apply it, but someday, we're gonna, we're gonna have to redo the inside to some extent.
Correct.
And when that gets to be a really big number, you know, 20, 30, 40 million dollar project, then that's when we're gonna try real hard to get that grant.
I just want the public to understand.
Yeah, I do too. I'm good with it. I'm glad you're explaining it better than I did.
Other question I have, Judge, excuse me, has to do with, I talked to Cheryl about this Friday afternoon, when I saw this, a million nine is a lot of money, and where it falls within the bidding statutes. And Cheryl said this was sole source. I don't know if it's sole source, from what I'm hearing, that there is another party that does it. But somehow, I need, before Commissioners take action, I think that needs to be addressed as to what it is, or if.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I guess Bruce, we've had, there's only three that the Historical Commission's approved of, and that we know of, that can do the work.
Right.
One of them, we tried, and their work's inferior, and we're not, we can't work with them.
I understand.
Other ones refuse to come work with us, so it's basically sole source, because it's the only other, this is the only company that we can deal with.
I understand.
I don't know how, I don't know how to satisfy you other than that explanation.
Well, you could satisfy me if we get a sole source letter from the vendor, or we simply do the required advertising in the paper just to satisfy the bid laws, and probably just, that's just a formality. Any comments, Daniel, on that?
I haven't looked at that issue, I mean, I've researched that, I can do that.
Can we approve it pending you're saying this is okay as a sole source?
The other question would be, if we did try to do ARPA money, then they're gonna ask those questions.
Yes, you can approve it pending, and then I can research that this week and get back to you.
Okay.
I just don't, I mean, I didn't look that up, so I don't know what the law is on whether that counts as a sole source exemption under the bidding rule.
Okay. And what was your last comment, Bruce, about the ARPA funds?
Well, I was gonna say, I know a lot of times with, with ARPA money, they look at that issue as far as, they look at that issue to make sure everything is legal, in order to make sure that money is acceptable to be spent on this project.
Yeah, but the legality there is gonna come down to whether or not we follow Texas bidding statutes, it's not gonna have any implications for federal bidding.
Right. And then, and so as long as BKD, and they've already said we can do repairs on buildings and use ARPA money, so.
Well, they said that, but they still got, you still have to follow the bidding laws to be able to use it.
Well, I understand, if Daniel tells us that we match it, then we're good, right? If Daniel tells us that we're legal to do it, you know, sole source letter or whatever, then, then, then I'm okay. Yes, sir. Okay.
Judge, I don't, I agree we need to move the project forward, but I don't know that, you know, a two-week delay is gonna affect it much, in light of the questions raised. I don't know that they're, I think I would be most comfortable just waiting until our next meeting to look into those and get answers before we approve it. But I understand where you're coming from as well.
Any other comments? Where you go?
I'll tell you what, I think next week, we're pretty busy. Why don't we find out what we can legally do before we go on? Let's put it off, or even for a special me, a special meeting before.
Can't be a special meeting, has to be, has to be a regular meeting for this type of funding.
Okay, we have to have it on a regular meeting.
It has to be regular.
I don't know, two weeks hurts us, Chris.
I say.
I mean, that's fine, I'm not trying to push it through, I'm just, maybe spend four years trying to get it somewhere, so.
I had a question, just to make sure I'm clear on everything. We have, there's three companies that do this type of work on historical buildings, correct?
No, they can do it.
And we've got one that refused to bid it.
Well, the gentleman, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 sorry about that. The first company that we talked to was the renowned company that does this all over the state of Texas. Well, he died, and his sons are still in the business, but they don't manage this kind of a project.
Okay.
They're not gonna bid on it. The second one did the work in the Commissioners that we've all seen, so that kinda narrows it down.
That's why I was gonna ask, we have one that basically not gonna bid it, and then one did a window, and it's inferior work, and then we've got the third company that actually redone a window, restored it, and it's, meets all of our specs, meets the Historical Society spec.
Yes.
I was just being clear on that, just to make sure. Okay, thank you.
But all these people were suggested, these companies, by the Historic Society, correct?
Yeah, I just suggested, these are the only three on the list.
That they'll work with, period.
They're the only approved vendors.
Basically.
This is not something you wanna take bids on, you might get 30 bids, but it's.
Tell me this, that one that did, did not do the work, is that the one that left her window down there? Is that the one of them?
Yes.
So that one's completely out. Okay, and the other one, don't know how to do it.
Well, no, yeah, they've lost, I mean, the one, like you said, the one we really wanted to do it, and he came out here several times, and he was sick when he came out here, and, but he was really wanting to do the job, and then COVID, whenever he could get it done, in the meantime, he passed away. And then we tried to get his sons, who took the company over, and they don't have his technical abilities and all to be able to do it, so.
I wanna tell you something, I have no problem with making a motion in reference to continue on with the stipulation that we're within legality. Daniel, we look into it and find out if we're actually legal because of the situation we have.
Yeah, you know, frankly, it'd be better to just put this off.
Good enough.
And then we can figure out in the next few days whether or not the, these circumstances, that there's only three that are approved by the court, by the funder, and this is more than a $50,000 job, but it may be a sole source based on those issues. If those don't lead to automatic use of the exemption for sole source out of the Purchasing Act, then I propose that I would work with Cheryl and immediately put out an RFP with those, a very short-term RFP with those requirements, that it can only come from those three people. Obviously, one of them's not gonna do it, obviously, it doesn't matter what the bid is, most likely from the other one, because this court can choose the best value, which people usually call the lowest and best, so the price doesn't have anything to do with it. And if this court is very unhappy with the work of the, of one, of the only two possible, then obviously, it's gonna head in that direction. But there, I mean, in order to check the boxes for legal use of that ARPA fund, I mean, we'll know that, I should know that by tomorrow.
In reference to going out for bids, as you said, it'll take more than two weeks, because it has to be, you know, everything has to go through.
If it goes to that.
Yes.
If it doesn't go to that, if we can come back with a sole source bid, then we can just put this back on the agenda for the next meeting, and come back two weeks from today on the 28th, and pass it at that time.
Okay, so we're gonna table it until the next meeting?
We're done our old business.
Okay.
Old business.
Postponing to old business? Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
All right, that's fine. Thank you, Chris. Action item number nine, racial profiling report for Hunt County Custom Precinct 4. Entertained motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 10, the G.I.S Workshop LLC DBA G-Works Proposals for Pub Works Computer Software for Precincts 1 through 4. First proposal is an amount of $50,850, which is no Pub Works Mobile. Second proposal is an amount of $65,850 with Pub Works Mobile. G.I.S Workshops LLC DBA G-Work Software is a sole source product, funding from precinct line item, precincts line item 2235. I assume that means all Commissioners are paying for it out of their budget, 1 through 4.
What is 2235?
We set up a new code for software for each precinct.
2235 is a software line item? Okay. All right.
Where's that gonna be funded from, Bruce?
It's gonna be funded within each of your precincts, you'll have to move money into that account.
Good enough. How much is that for each one of us?
Depending on which one you pick.
It'll be, if it's like the 60-something, I guess it's, what, 16,000 or thereabouts?
Good enough.
All right, who's, who's, Mark, you driving the boat on this?
Sure. So just to remind the public, we had a presentation some months ago from this, this company, we're interested in the software, it's a, it's a project asset and inventory management software, is, we believe is gonna help us streamline some of our operations and, and make more efficient use of the taxpayer dollars. It's gonna help us collect a lot of historical data, that's gonna be important for us to analyze today and in the future as we make decisions about road and bridge funding and spending. So the reason it's on the agenda is because obviously, we need to approve this contract, but we also have the option of either to, either purchasing this with the ability to have mobile app on employee phones or Commissioners' phones, or however we want that, or just to purchase it without that and use it on our desktops, laptops, tablets, that sort of thing. And so, it's because of quorum laws, it's tough to talk about these, you really can't talk about these things outside of court, so we just need to make a decision if we wanna, which one we wanna move forward with. I'll, I'll go ahead and say that, you know, I tend to favor the lower quote right now, just because I don't think we're set up for the foreseeable future to manage, manage the mobile side of things. But that being said, part of the reason I thought it important that we look at both options is because pricing on this software, as with everything today, is gonna go up significantly in the future. So we could, we could purchase it today for significantly less than if we were going to purchase it in, say, three years. So, you know, that's, that's, you know, open question as to what the other Commissioners want to do.
Is it one, one, we got, one's gotta take all, I mean, you can't mix in, if somebody wanted the mobile app part of it and other Commissioner didn't, is there?
Yeah, we could, yeah, if, if an individual precinct wanted to purchase a mobile app for just their precinct, that's certainly an option, I don't have.
Either now or in the future, either way.
Either now or in the future, that's correct.
I think the, the mobile app would be nice. My only issue with it right now is the fact that none of our employees have cellphones or tablets. So you're gonna put it on somebody's personal phone for them to be able to use that, and I don't know what kind of trouble we're gonna get into with that. Down the road, if we, if we end up moving where our employees have phones or tablets or something, I think it'd be a great asset. For me personally, having it on my phone's not gonna do me any good, so that's my stance on the mobile app.
Well, do we, we don't want everybody to have access, do we?
Yes, because what it is.
I mean, as far as putting data in it, you wanna restrict it to, to you or your informant to be putting information in, but everybody should be able to view it, and I get that part.
That's what my question was in reference to this, have y'all talked to IT about the security of this?
Yes, we brought IT into the process early on, and they had no concerns about this.
Okay.
It'll be on our server?
It'll be on county computers and comply with.
Would you explain that, Brandon, because I wanna make sure that's, security of it basically is not, please.
See, you got caught coming over here.
I love it.
To speak to the issue about being on the county phones first, or on personal phones, that would, if it is on personal phones, each person's personal phone would then be subject to public information.
Right.
And all their personal data would be, you know, it'd be out there. But as far as the software itself, yeah, that would be completely secure, and it, we wouldn't have any issues with that, because it is cloud-based, so.
So will the public be able to get on our webpage and look at their precinct and see a road? Will it, is it that flexible, or just the Commissioners are gonna have access to it?
No, only Commissioners and the road, and whoever in there on their crew, they give access to, would have access to it.
So whatever users are set up in the system, those will be the only ones that can log in and look at it.
Okay.
The only way that they'll be able to get it is for Information Act, I imagine, then.
Right, I just, I just. You can probably do a monthly report and attach it on there like we do ours, so you could probably do that every month.
Yeah, I just, I know a lot of people call in, want to know about their road, if they could go on and look at it, would be helpful, but I didn't know if it had that option or not.
I mean, we can put anything on the website that they would want, but obviously, within the software itself, you'd have to run a report.
It has tremendous reporting capacity, so certainly will help us to be able to more efficiently provide information to our constituents as well.
I'm, I'm good with going to the lower one right now, I'm just, I'm scared of pulling the trigger on the big one, and then, again, not having employees issued phones or tablets or something.
I agree.
I agree with that. I personally don't want it on my cellphone, because I don't want it, public information.
All right, so what about the line item transfers? Are we, do we need to make the motion with the line item transfers in it, or y'all already worked all that out, or?
Well, I think Stacy Kramer, if I'm wrong, we were waiting to see what kind of action you were gonna take, and then we'll bring the transfers the next time.
Next time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So all y'all need to give us a transfer information to Stacy, so we'll know where to take the money from.
Okay.
Also, I'd like to bring this up, even with my discussion with these people, basically additional. In fact, I believe Mark said there might need to be an additional person or employee in reference to this. If, am I correct, Brenda, am I correct? That's, that's if Brittany can't take care of it, this will allow us to go and find out what we need to, but with the possibility of hiring someone else to help out. Am I correct?
I don't anticipate that being needed or done, Philip. I spoke with, in speaking with this company, they, the overwhelming majority of their clients who are counties do not have designated personnel for this. In Collin County, which is, you know, a county of over a million now, they do have somebody whose duties include helping administer this, but it is not exclusively that.
I got faith Brittany can handle it for right now.
I think, I think we'll manage just fine. And, and, yeah, that's it.
Do the Barnes and Teller all have enough Wi-Fi or enough internet to be able to operate it?
Mine is sketchy, but I'm improving that for this purpose.
We're gonna have to, y'all are getting us a printer up there at that junction, we had talked with y'all last week, and y'all were up there trying to fix it, we'd appreciate any help. Good, good enough, thank you.
Precinct 4 is usual, as usual, is in good shape.
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved, that we. So moved, uh, we, um, entered to, entered into the bid, the quote for $50,800.
And 50?
$8,850?
$50,000, yes, sorry.
With the Pub Works non-mobile application?
Yes, sir, that's, so moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 11, a contract with Ram Ball U.S. Consulting Inc. regarding Hunt County Precinct Two Barn affected property assessment report finalization. Daniel, you want to brief us or you give me to try to?
Yeah, I will.
I can try, I'll probably fumble it if I try to explain it.
Actually, this one needs to wait till after executive.
Okay, all right.
And, ask us number 14.
Two and 14, okay. All right, so we'll skip 11 till after executive session. Action item 12, the placement of a security light for Bo's Home at, I assume that's Bo's Home ISD.
Yes.
At Hunt, at County Road 3505 and Shady Drive at Bo's Home ISD expense.
Yes, sir. What the, what the deal is, is 3505 and Shady Drive is very narrow in there anyway and it's dark. And Bo's Home had asked me, and I got with FEC about putting a light there, and Bo's Home will have all the expense and reference to it to where their bus driver, and also the kids meet at that location also. So at their expense, I'm asking that we allow this security light be put on an existing pole within our right of way. That's a motion.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 13, the amendment to development requirements for short-term rental communities is approved, GI 12, 2022, Commissioners Court Minutes Number 17,589. Commissioners, this is, I, I guess in our haste to get that approved, we didn't have the penalty clauses in it, uh, and enforcement mechanisms in it, is that correct, Daniel? So all this is, is adding that language in that should have been in it originally. So I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're skipping 14 till after executive session. Action item 15, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities which will be in the right of way of County Road 2176 under normal stipulations in Precinct Two.
Make a motion to approve this?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 16, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities which will be in right of way of County Road 3207 under normal stipulations in Precinct Three.
I make a motion, we allow this construction?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 17, the upgrade of approximately .584 miles of County Road 1132 from dirt to rock in Precinct One at County's expense.
Make a motion, we approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 18, upgrade of approximately 550 feet of County Road 3218 from dirt to rock in Precinct Three connecting two county roads at County's expense.
So moved, we allow this construction?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 19, the construction plans for legacy estates in Precinct Two. Brian, you want to brief us?
Uh, this one came through, the preliminary plat came through, uh, so ago. This is just finalizing the, uh, construction plans. There's a letter in there from, uh, Mark Hickman. Uh, it was a, not a bad process, but there were a couple of different reviews of the plans to get everything worked out. We finally got them worked out and, uh, and these guys are jumping up and down, ready to start building.
So have we done anything with their plat?
The preliminary plat was approved.
Approved.
This will be for the, uh, construction plans and then the final plat will come back through once they're a little bit further down.
Further down, okay. All right, Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item, uh, that was 19, mark it up. 20, I didn't, I was doing too many things at once, Philip. I can't do more than one thing at a time. Uh, old age. Action item 20, the construction plans for Martinez Edition in Precinct Four.
Uh, there again, this is a, well, this is a real simple subdivision. It's actually a family division, but they are having to construct a street, so therefore they get to plat it. I have the letter here from, uh, Mark Hickman. I don't think I actually gave you all a copy of the letter, but, uh, if you like, I have it here. Uh, it's the same, same thing as usual, saying that the preliminary plat and construction plans are, uh, up to, up to county regulations, so, county requirement.
We have, uh, we have the letter.
We have it.
Oh, it is in there? Good. I wasn't sure if I'd put it in or not.
So are you saying we're approving the preliminary plat at the same time? It's not on our agenda to approve, or has it already been done?
This will be for the construction plans only. They'll run the preliminary through and then they'll.
And then file, okay. All right. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, action item 21, the replat of Lot 30 Whispering Oaks subdivision in Precinct Two. You want to brief us and then we'll have a public media, public hearing?
Sure. This one was actually, the replat process was started, well, the, uh, replat was submitted some time back. Had quite a few requirements needed to be met. Uh, they've, they've finally gotten the right of way all cleared of all brush trees and whatnot. Uh, the commissioner went down and looked at it. This is on an existing county road. Uh, he went down and looked at it. He did not want to widen the road. Surface is good. He didn't want to get in and do anything with the surface. So, uh, of course, we can only request that they upgrade the road adjacent to the plat. Uh, other than that, the plat meets all of the, uh, all the county requirements with and acreage and all. Uh, so got a one-acre lot, so they will ultimately require the half-acre septic dedication on all of them. Of course, they'll do that separately, separate instrument as they usually do, so.
Okay. Well, at this time, I'll open this to a public hearing of the replat of Lot 30 Whispering Oaks subdivision in Precinct Two. Does anybody wish to speak for or against this plat? Nobody wishes to speak for or against it? We'll close the public hearing. Uh, Commissioners, what's, what's your pleasure?
Brian, you, have you been down there and inspected the roads? And in your opinion, you don't, you think they're good shape, don't need to be upgraded or?
The, the surface is good down through there. Uh, it's way back in there, there's not a whole lot of, I don't think there's any through traffic because I don't think there's any, uh, any way to get out the other side of these roads. Uh, surface of the road is actually, actually pretty good due to the, the low traffic. I think a lot of those folks probably live down there quite a bit and probably understand that when you go speeding down these old roads, it just destroys them, so. Uh, width-wise on the road, it's not as wide as what I would like to see. It's probably 16 to 17 feet wide. It's in a big sweeping curve, so it's, it's kind of hard to tell. I mean, it's not just a straight shot.
You, you said the commissioner didn't want to upgrade the road or widen the road. You are talking about a previous commissioner and not.
The previous commissioner.
Okay.
This came, this, this whole, uh, this thing submitted to me a while back.
Okay.
That was kind of why I was asking if you had put your eyes on it. I, I haven't seen it.
Yes, I put my eyes on it. Surface of the road is good. Width of the road is, uh, a, a little under there. Again, you're not dealing with a big thoroughfare road. It doesn't go through and, and connect in.
Just have a cul-de-sac then turn around or is it tying to another road or how, how does it circulate?
There are places to turn around down, down the road, so, uh, there's a, two intersections and I believe one of them actually kind of has a cul-de-sac at the intersection, so.
Is this a one-way in, one-way out road and gets that kind of traffic?
One-way in, one-way out.
Yes.
I think originally Whispering Oaks was supposed to connect back through there. Uh, the roads back, once you get back into the, the subdivision, they get a little questionable. I didn't want to drive down through there in the county truck.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and make the motion, we approve this plat.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, action item 22, the preliminary plat of rolling acres in Precinct Four.
Well, uh, this is one of the first of, uh, several that I've, I've kind of had some tire kickers on throughout this, this Jacobia area. Uh, this is a, a pretty nice subdivision. We've had a pre-development meeting with the developer sometime back and they, there were some drainage issues, so they went through and, and got all the drainage worked out and, and looked at and figured out how many lots they could get. Uh, it's a, the, the preliminary plat looks good and we'll see how it all goes once we, uh, once we get all the, the construction plans worked out. Of course, they're always subject to potentially lose a lot or so if they have, have additional drainage needed or retention or detention or anything like that, so.
Okay. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 23, the final plat of Soto Ranchettes in Precinct One.
Uh, this is a, uh, one that we've, I believe Commissioner Hutchins actually met with the developer this morning regarding the road upgrade. Pretty simple plat. It's got a whole lot of road that needs to be upgraded though, so, uh, I would request a conditional approval on this, waiting on that, that road upgrade. It meets all our standards other than that. It's, it's got the furniture that he needs, uh, nice-sized lots.
We, we haven't given a price yet or they haven't put enough money or what?
We have and then that, that, there were some subsequent conversations, but after our meeting this morning, I think we, um, he was able to understand, understand where we're coming from. And so I think, uh, I think the price is agreed to, so I would, I would agree that it would be appropriate to approve this, um, conditional upon receipt of that, that deposit.
If it's meant.
Conditioned upon them putting up money to improve the road?
Correct. I believe we've worked out that and, uh, it's a nice straight road, lots along it, so it's, it's a good, it's a good little subdivision.
Second.
All right, got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 24, cancellation of the final plat of Marabella in Precinct One.
We're going to go backwards on this one. It's not something we get to do very often. This was a, uh, this was a pretty big subdivision that was approved back in 2017. Since the developers have decided that they're not going to build the subdivision, they're not going to install the infrastructure, they're not going to build the roads, uh, and they want to cancel the plat and revert it back to one large tract that's cow pasture.
Has, has anything been developed? Has there any property been?
Nothing. None of the property's been developed and none of the property has changed hands. It's still owned by the original, uh, developer and there was not, uh, this is one that didn't require right-of-way dedication out along the county road. Uh, I don't believe they owned out to the county road. I think it stopped shy and there again, it was done back in 17.
Had they done a final plat you advised?
Yeah, the final plat's been approved.
Final plat was approved and recorded and it was just never, uh.
Do you just stick in the jacket, uh, cancellation sheet or how do you, how do you get it canceled on the record?
They've got to record a, a document with the clerk cancelling the deed.
So it would just be in the system because now we return all of the plats back to, we don't hold plats anymore because everything's digitalized.
Okay, so there's no way to put it in, in?
We would just put it in the system.
In the system? So they just have to search it under that name and find it?
Yeah.
Okay. Just curious, I know used to, they used to put stuff in the sheets.
I, you, this, and I understand that this was prior to us having this, but prior to that, during that time when that one went through, if they didn't do anything by the end of two years, it went away.
Correct.
Am I correct? Uh, I don't mind taking action on this. Uh, you tell us how to put it and we'll take action and completely do away with it, but I believe it was already fixed to where it would be done away with.
The way the requirements read is that y'all would, uh, uh, you know, approve the, the cancellation of the plat and then he will have to record a, a document with, with the clerk stating that the owners of the plat, and it'd have to have all the owners' names, which would be one because it's just one developer, uh, cancel the plat and as approved by the Commissioners Court and this, this number on this date, whatever.
All right, entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, guys.
Action item 25, the acceptance of high bids received on resold properties as follows. Account number R70091, R70092. Uh, bid amounts $5,678.40. Uh, address is 1502 Washington Street Commerce, 1500 Washington Street Commerce. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anything else before the court? We need anything online, any comments online, Daniel?
Comments online.
Okay. Not being none, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, there are items one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're in executive session at 11:26. All opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session at eleven twenty-six.
We are live.
All right, it's 12:52, we're back in regular session. We'll go back and take up action item 11 of the agenda, a contract with Ramboe, Ramboe U.S. Consulting, Inc., regarding Hunt County Precinct Two, barn affected property assessment report finalization, entertaining motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 14, resolution allowing the sale of fireworks for Texas Independence Day, San Jacinto Day, Memorial Day in Hunt County.
Your Honor, I move that Hunt County pass a resolution allowing sale of fireworks on Texas Independence Day, San Jacinto Day, and Memorial Day where the calendar periods listed in the Texas Occupational Code, Section 2154.202H-1-3, and that this authorization continue until revolved by the Commissioners Court, and that this authorization be subject to fire marshal bans and other state laws.
Second.
And motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We adjourned at 12:53.[263.01]